Conduct in the City Council Chambers. Rules of decorum for the public. Members of the audience shall not engage in disorderly or boisterous conduct, including the utterance of loud, threatening, or abusive language, clapping, whistling, stamping of feet, or other acts which disturb, disrupt, impede, or otherwise render the orderly conduct of the city meeting infeasible. A member of the audience engaging in any such conduct shall, at the discretion of the presiding officer or a majority of the city council, be subject to ejection from the meeting per Government Code Section 54954.3C. Removal from the council chambers. Any person who commits the following acts in respect to a meeting of the cities shall be removed from the council chambers per Government Code Section 54954.3C. A. Disorderly, contemptuous, or insolent behavior towards the city council or any member thereof, tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. A breach of peace, boisterous conduct, or violent disturbance, tending to interrupt the due and orderly course of said meeting. Disobedience of any lawful order from the mayor, which shall include an order to be seated or to refrain from addressing the city council, and any other unlawful interference with the due and orderly course of said meeting. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the TAF City Council Successor Agency Joint Regularly Scheduled Meeting for Tuesday, November 21st. The City of TAF council meetings are being held in person with full capacity seating and are live streamed at www.youtube.com/user/CityOfTaft. Public comment can be made in person and also can be received for the following. Written comments may be dropped off in the drop box in front of City Hall. Comments may be emailed to the city clerk@cityclerk@cityoftaft.org. They may also be made by phone to the city clerk's office at 661-763-1222. Public comments will be accepted up until 5:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, and all comments received will be read into the record. We're going to begin this evening's meeting with a pledge of allegiance led by myself, followed by an invocation from Lloyd Francis. If you will all stand and join us, please.
Salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Truly, in this season, Lord, we want to come and thank you. Thank you for our servants, the people who serve our community and the city council, for the sheriff's department, the workers in the street management offices and administration. We were thankful, oh God, that there are men and women that are readily available to serve the people of our city of TAF. We pray, God, for the population, that during this season of Thanksgiving, individuals, Lord, would come together as a family, and that there be a time of joy and response of thankfulness to you, oh God, and to how we have had a wonderful year. I pray, God, again, that you give wisdom and guidance to the council, to all those who are in this room. May there be an understanding and a cooperative communication to get business done in your will, we pray.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, sir.
Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Nor.
Here.
Mayor Protem Crier.
Here.
Councilmember Bryant.
Here.
Councilmember Waldrop.
Here.
And Councilmember Chavera is absent with notice.
All right, thank you very much. All right, first item on this evening's agenda is a public hearing. Performance report out of closeout of CDBG Grant 20-CDBG-CV-2-3-00222. C Manager Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Recipients of the Community Development Block Grant Funds are required to hold a public hearing regarding grant performance in order to provide information to citizens regarding the performance of the grant activities. This is an opportunity to share whether activities were completed in a timely fashion, are within budget, and are in accordance to all CDBG program goals and objectives. The public is encouraged to ask questions and express viewpoints of the grant. The CDB program is a program in which federal housing and urban development HUD funds are used, providing to small cities and counties through and administered by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. The CDBG program is designed to meet the following national objectives: to benefit targeted income group households, and to eliminate slums and blight, and to meet urgent community development needs. The Need Center is a local nonprofit, 501(c)(3), and is completely volunteer-run. The primary goal of the center is to provide food to low-income families and individuals receiving some type of public assistance, families in crisis, homeless individuals, seniors, and immigrant farmworkers. The purpose of the city's 2020 CDBG CV grant was to improve the delivery of Need Centers services during the pandemic and beyond. The renovation improved efficiencies and safety of distribution of food, ensuring less physical contact between clients and center volunteers, and also has improved the facility for onsite storage of commodities received by the center.
Thank you, C Manager Jones. At this time, I'm going to open a public hearing and receive comments regarding the CDBG grant program. Anybody wishing to speak on behalf of this program, step forward.
Surprise! Good afternoon, or good evening. My name is Lucille Holt, and I am the Executive Director of the Need Center. And I just want to tell you all how thankful we are for the money that was invested in our facility. Because if any of you ever visited it before, we had a great big huge warehouse that you could see out of it. The sides of the building, it was 10. And we've never really been able to work from there. We could store food in it, but it was very, very... It was too hot in the winter, in the summer, and it just... You just weren't allowed to have really very many foodstuffs back there. This has allowed us to set up our facility, where we no longer have to carry every case of food that we served, was carried in the front door of that building, put on a table, and packed into orders. And right now, we're running about 300 families a week. So you think about a week's worth of food going out to that many people. That's a lot of caring for people who are mostly all over 65. We're not old, but we're, you know, we're fine, finely aged at this age. But I just wanted to tell you, we are so thankful for your investment in us. And we... This will allow us to easily serve the community with the high price of inflation, despite what we hear from the government. The foodstuffs that we purchased that three years ago was about $24,000, runs over $52,000. That's a huge invest... increase in food. I don't know where people get their numbers, but if you hear that food has gone up 16%, it has gone up a lot more. And I can back it up with figures, anybody wants to see that. But again, if you have a chance, stop by and take a look at what we've... What we're doing there, take a look at the beautiful warehouse that we have. And of course, if you run into anyone who needs help with food, you know where to send them. So thank you again for your investment. And also, I have to say, I have never been on this side of a CDBG grant. I've been on the other side. And I do know how hard that is to administer. As times have gone by, it's like they... They want your, you know, your firstborn, and they will take your blood if you do not administer it correctly. And I have to say, city staff was wonderful. Craig, he was able to come down there and straighten everything out. They went beyond and above what we even inspected... we expected. And they just made our facility look just wonderful. So we can easily get in and out of the building with the handicap ramp. And also, we are able to have them drive down our driveway, pick up the food, and out. We're trying to make sure we don't interfere with traffic as, you know, least as we can, and also keep people safe. It's the street level, so if there's any germs, hopefully, they blow away in the air. And we will continue what we can do for as long as we can do it. So I'm planning on being there till I'm at least 90, so.
I like it.
Anyway, thank you, gentlemen.
All right, very good. Thank you very much, and thank you and all the people that volunteer down there to do what they do. It's a true benefit to so many. Does anybody else wish to speak on behalf of this program? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. At this time, I would entertain a motion to accept and document any and all comments to be placed in the city's public information file and find that the activity is not a project for the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section 15060(c)(3) and Section 15378 of the SEQA guidelines.
Motion.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Mayor Protem Crier, you made the motion. Any discussion, sir?
I think all the Need Center stuff, a little comment on that. They do a really good job of the only things that was... That needed to be done to serve our community, especially the ones who are senior citizens that live on a tight budget or fixed income. It's a small thing that we did, but it's going to last for 30, maybe 40 more years, the roof and all that stuff going, so that time, we're going to have that much more service. We're going to get out of the Need Center. And it's a good organization. We have a lot of volunteers there. Even our former mayor, councilman, is there all the time, Randy Miller. And Lucille Holt, I know she's been here for an awful long time. There are a lot of dedicated volunteers there. And unfortunately, we can use some young folks here to help out a little bit, as well as the oil museums there. They're getting old and tired, and they could use some extra help to take care of our needy here in TAF. There's one thing about TAF, we have a great community here that support our own and want to make things happen, that's all I have to say, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Councilman Bryant, you had a second, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lucille, I'm glad you spoke up, because I was going to ask you to do it during the public comment if you didn't do it there. Just real quick, I'll be 40 in January, and as long as I can remember, the Need Center has been in the city of Taft. Do you know how long the Need Center's been active?
Do I need to come up? It's actually been alive since the mid-'70s. It was started by two Quaker schoolteachers. And it has grown from a small organization to what it is now. And it was up in South Taff, we moved to this building. Fred Holmes gave us this building. And it's almost always been run by volunteers.
Wonderful, thank you. I just want to say thank you for continuing the legacy that they established. You know, it's been, what, 50, almost 60 years now? That's an amazing thing, and I'm thankful that folks came to the city and proposed this. I'm happy and proud that we were able to facilitate it and make sure that the Need Center's here for generations to come. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Councilman Waldrop, any comments, sir?
Just for our community, we got a lot of great service clubs in this town that really makes it happen, so my hat's off to them. Thank you.
All right, thank you all very much. Thanks again. Let's see if we're coming before the council. Next up, item number two, citizens' request public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have any citizens' requests? Other than the one I have before me?
We didn't have a vote.
Oh, did I not do that? Did I circumvent that process? I'm sorry, ma'am, that was a streamline, I beg your pardon.
Well, that's what we got it for.
Okay. At this time, I have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call?
Mayor Protem Crier?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
And Mayor Nor?
Yes, that passes on a 4-0 vote with one council member absent with...
Notice.
Notice, yes. Okay, now then, we'll move on to item number two, citizens' request public comments. Okay. All right. Citizens' request public comments. Comments are to be received as stated in the above policy. This is the time and place for the general public to address the city council on matters within its jurisdiction. State law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. Council may receive comment and set the matter for a subsequent meeting. Please limit your comments to five minutes. First up, I believe we have Dr. Orin of the TAF Chamber wishing to address the council.
Good evening, it's a pleasure to be here. I had to run a short errand on my way to this meeting, and it took me down Center Street. And I want to tell you, it is a wonderful thing that our small community is able to recognize a nationally observed Christian holiday. And we have not only the decorations that are not free, we also can light them, which is not free. And in these times, that's a real commitment. So I want to thank you for making that as important as you've made it for us so that we can enjoy that this season. This is a tough season for us, and I'm sure for you as well. So thank you for that. I wanted to acknowledge that we had a trout derby last Saturday, the Chamber of Commerce Annual Trout Derby. We had over 1,000 fisher persons. They were there on Thursday lined up before the trout... The gates opened at 6:00 a.m. on Friday. So you can imagine a lot of people. I don't remember ever... This is my 13th trout derby. I don't remember that many people at all. They were wonderful. Everybody understood that there were a lot of people out there, with the possible exception of one person. But you always remember the one that's not happy, don't you? But it was wonderful, and we appreciate the county of Kern, and we appreciate all of the people that helped us out with that, especially people that sold tickets for us. Our own True Value was a place to sell tickets. And Copes in Bakersfield was an amazing help for us. They did all of the weighing. Hallelujah. That's not something I enjoy doing, so it was wonderful. So I wanted to give them kudos for that. I want to remind everybody that the 4th of December is the first Monday of December, and that means it's our Christmas parade. And we have all of the sign-up stuff, all of the information that you need is at the chamber. And we're... Our theme this year is Santa Paws. That's P-A-W-S. So we're encouraging folks to include their pets, so long as they are on a leash. And we're getting a good response. People are really getting behind this. Our... Our... What do we call them? The grand marshals are unity thrift and rescue, and we are honoring them for the work that they do with animals, making sure that the animals are spayed and neutered in our town and that they are not just running around creating problems. So we appreciate them for that. So they will be honored in the parade. I have someone coming up behind me that is going to be telling you about a ton of stuff that's going on Fifth Street Plaza. So I'm not going to belabor this, but I do want to mention a new thing that the chamber is doing is, on the 15th and 16th, that is a Friday and Saturday, we are going to have our version of the Polar Express. We are going to take a hay wagon around the town and look at the lights. There will be a competition between neighborhoods, and we will... You'll be able to vote on your favorite neighborhood or a standout home. And we will be giving rides on the 15th and 16th for that. So that's going to be a new thing that we've added this year, and I hope it will be successful. It's kind of a step out for us, so we're planning on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Kathy, as always. All right, next up, we have Renee Adamo.
Hello. Thank you for having me. I'm with the Westside Park and Recreation District. And Ed Gaither and Dawn and Sherry Black, a few years ago, went out on a limb to do something really great for our town. And they bought... We bought it. Everybody got together. We had lots of donations and everything. But it was Sherry and Ed's dream to have a big Christmas tree in the Fifth Street Plaza. Well, they've been gracious enough to pass that on to the rec. So the Westside Park and Recreation District will now, with the help of Ed and Sherry, because it's a lot, have that open to the public, for everybody to come and see. So we've added a few dates. We'd like to invite you to come. We will light the tree on the 3rd, so it will be ready for the parade on the 4th. We also... The Polar Express is going to come and get some hot chocolate and some donut holes. That's the only way that we make money at the tree. Everything else we do is basically free. I think we're going to add popcorn this year. But we have ornaments for the kids to come and paint. That's all free. We have buttons, we have letters to Santa. We're going to do a ugly sweater contest for pets. We're going to do... We're going to have on the Wednesday, the 6th, we're going to have the chamber mixer there at 6 o'clock. We're going to have photos with Santa all through the week. We're going to do... We're going to have a... The churches are going to come, and I'll have all of this and a wonderful calendar out the day after Thanksgiving, or probably Monday. We're going to have the little dancers come, and they're going to dance for us. We're going to have the preschool come and do their Christmas program. So if you have any talents, or you know somebody who's talented, or you just want to come up and shake a leg, we'd love to have you come and visit our tree. So I hope to see you all there. My biggest concern, and I think rightfully so for all of us, is keeping our tree from being vandalized. So I'm asking, if you're jogging at 4:00 in the morning, if you're going to work at 2:00 in the morning, or midnight, or whenever, if you can just drive by our tree, if we can keep a presence, and if we could maybe have the police department... I know they're very busy, but on their way in and out and around, if they could drive by our tree, we're going to do our best to keep it as safe as we can. Mainly, it's vandalism that's our biggest concern, and that's everybody's concern. So if we all work together and keep a good eye out on it, because we'll do our part with that, too. So thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I can tell you, I for one am a big believer. I love the tree. I loved the idea when it was first proposed. People have worked so very hard.
The community has.
The community has.
The whole community. It's not a one person. That was their dream, and everybody came together. And that's what makes it so special. That's why we want to keep it nice. That's why we want to keep putting it up.
We do. Something we can all be very proud of. And you have the ear of TAF PD. You have Mr. Corey Beck right there. How about that? Now that's direct. So you just... You just made a difference. Thank you very much for coming before us.
And have the water turned off for that time? Who would I speak to about that? How's that work in public?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Got an answer to that one, too. All right, thank you very much.
Chris Creachey.
Okay, next up, we have a public comment from Martin Scott. As we talked about at the beginning of the meeting, whether you come before us and we see you in person, which is a preferred method, or you prefer to email us, it will be read into the record. So, Mr. Martin Scott. Subject is Fourth Street. Please present this to the city council. There's a significant problem with speeders on Fourth Street from Warren to Ash. I just saw an off-road four-wheeler go south at a blistering pace, which is very common. All kinds of vehicles, all hours of the day and night. I have tried to get assistance. I was told by a city official that it was a state road, and I would have to contact Caltrans. I guess we're going to wait until someone gets seriously hurt or worse to get something done. I rarely see a patrol vehicle here or anywhere else, for that matter. My neighbors and I are frustrated and would like some help. Regards, Martin Scott. Martin, thank you for contacting the city council. Okay, that's the end of the citizens' request public comments. Moving forward, item number three, council statements non-action. Councilman Waldrop, we'll begin with you, sir.
I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And please, whether you're local or driving to family and friends, please be careful, because there's a lot of idiots out there. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Councilman Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Stick with that theme. It's obviously the Thanksgiving season, and I for one am thankful to live here, in Taft, on the west side. I've grown up here, lived here my whole life, outside of when I went to college. Even then, I still lived here, just on the weekends. TAF is not what we want it to be all the time, and a lot of that's out of our control. And if you can be okay with that, just like I am, you can appreciate TAF for what we do have. And I'll talk about this in a little while, but oftentimes, we look at things in a vacuum, oftentimes in a vacuum of negativity. How is it negatively impacting me without considering the positive things? I want you to take a moment and be thankful for the things that we have here that other towns our size or other towns in California don't have. We do have a lot to be thankful here, despite the things we'd like to have. So be thankful for what you do have and help us work towards the things you'd like to have. I know we'd love to partner with you in one way or another. I want to wish a special thanks to our first responders especially, and local, either domestically or foreignly deployed military. Thankful for those people for the work that they do, especially on holidays, or not just on holidays, but every day. But those folks are taking time away from their families in a career to protect us all in one form or fashion. Keep those folks in your minds and in your prayers this holiday season, especially this Thursday. We appreciate you guys very much, Corey. You guys, I'm really happy that you and Renee brought up the parade, because I was going to mention that. It's going to happen before we're able to meet again. I've been asked a number of times about the Christmas tree lighting, and I actually didn't know till the end of last week, so I'm happy to hear that confirmed. There is one other thing happening that weekend that I wanted to mention. It's on the 2nd, the oil museum is having their 50th anniversary Black Gold Gala. So I would definitely encourage folks to, if you haven't visited it, even if it's not for the gala, go visit the museum. They've got a lot of really cool stuff, especially for folks who've never been there. My mother grew up here. She told me about a month ago, she's never been to the museum, and I'm bumfuddled, although I have no idea how that happened. So I've got to take her there. I mentioned about the Need Center being here as long as I can remember, and I know the oil museum is older than that. I mean, I've got trees that are probably fully grown that I planted in kindergarten out there. I'm looking forward to going to the event. I'm thankful that I get to be a part of it, and I really would encourage folks to come out and support the oil museum as best you can. It's 100% volunteer-run, just like the Need Center, just like a lot of the other nonprofits and social clubs or service clubs in town. Support them. They've got a lot of events going on this holiday season, and I'm thankful that they've invested for generations in Taft. Ron mentioned a couple times about a book that he'd read by a local author, or author with local origins. And I'm not much of a reader. I don't like to read for pleasure, it's just never been my thing. But if you do pique my interest with something about philosophy, or politics, or sports, or some amalgamation of all those things, my ears perk up. I picked up this little thing last week. It's called Fossil Future by Alex Epstein. Alex was in town a couple years ago for the petroleum summit. He wrote a book before that called The Moral Case for Fossil Fuels. This is kind of a follow-up to it. And oftentimes, I could hear somebody right now saying, "Well, this is just an echo chamber for how you feel, or your perspective, your values." That may be right, but it's rooted in fact, and it's proven in this book. And not only did he give you the positives that can and should and do come from the oil, gas, and petrochemicals industries, he tells you the negatives, too. He tells you, these are the things that are the downsides of continuing. But like I mentioned about decisions or perspectives in a vacuum, a lot of the decisions we've made societally, politically, and economically in this country have been made in the idea that oil, gas, and the any derivative thereof is not good for the environment, or impacts global warming. And even in this book, they'll tell you, yeah, there's parts of it that are true, absolutely. But the benefits outweigh a factor of 1,000x, I mean, 1,000 times over. And even then, the impacts on the environment are further mitigated by our additional consumption and production because of all the energy it produces. And the energy allows us to do research to better mitigate emissions, or anything of that nature. So regardless of what your affiliations are, your inclinations are, I would just encourage you to read it. Even if you don't end up agreeing with me, or any of us, read it. It's a great book. You can find it online, you can find it hardback, paperback, audiobook. I subscribe to Spotify. I listened to that thing, and it was free with my subscription. It's a great read, and I would encourage anybody on any side of the aisle when it comes to fossil fuels, take a listen, take a read. Like I said, I don't like to read, but I was engulfed in it, so. I think that's all I have. I want to say to Kathy, for you in the chamber, as well as the... I want to say to Kathy, for you in the chamber, as well as the rec district, thank you guys for emphasizing the downtown. When it comes to all the events that are happening around the plaza, and in the downtown area around this time, I love the idea of the Polar Express, I think it's awesome. Taft has always been a place wonderfully about community, and finding ways to do stuff that's not always really expensive, but it's fun, and involves us getting together, and I'm thankful for that, and I'm thankful that it's continuing. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, that's plenty. Holiday season's coming up, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
And everybody's abuzz with all the opportunities, as am I. The parade is always a good time, the Christmas tree lighting is a fantastic affair that I hope just grows and grows, and becomes a part of our celebration every single year. So thank you all for everybody that puts so much work into that. We had an event take place just last week, where we dedicated a couple of signs. The signs are right out here on the highway. Those signs are dedicated to Corporal Luis Carlos Ruan, United States Army. A young man who, he did not lose his life in combat, but he was on a training mission, and when he signed on in the military of these United States, he basically was writing that blank check. And he unfortunately spent two and a half years in the army, training to be able to defend the cause of freedom, and was in a terrible accident that took the lives immediately of two other young soldiers, and he spent a year and a half, the last year and a half of his life, fighting for his life because of his injuries. He finally succumbed to his injuries. But his family was there, and we have dedicated a portion of the highway to his name. So in his passing, obviously, his voice has been silenced, but his message will ring true, his message of sacrifice and freedom, and the belief in that will continue to ring through every time somebody sees that sign and thinks about, who is he and why is that sign here? And freedom is not free, and sacrifice takes place twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and it is not just a combatant, it is the family's support mechanism, whether they come home, they be in the combatant, or they do not. There's sacrifice all along the way, and it is up to all of us to not take our freedoms for granted, and support them and appreciate them twenty-four hours a day. So that is the reason for that, and I hope you all think about that, day in and day out, every day. On top of that, there's something that's going to be happening here soon that we've talked about for quite some time. Everybody remember the discussion of the construction of a Hard Rock Cafe Casino and Hotel? The official groundbreaking, I got an invitation, is going to be December the fourteenth. That's right, it's actually going to happen. It takes a long time for these things to get all the way through to that point, but it is going to happen. So save your quarters, folks, those slot machines will not be that far away. I don't even know if they take quarters anymore, do they? Anyway, it's something exciting, and there will also be, and I had two different opportunities to speak with the chief during the course of all the discussion as far as getting approval for this thing, and there will be job opportunities, and she knows, and they know, that one of the markets for employees will be right here in the city of Taft, so could very well come to pass. But I wanted to, I'm sorry, it had kind of slipped my mind in a little while, and here we are, Christmas time, and boom, popped up on my phone, so I wanted to share that with you all.
Going to need a Christmas bonus to afford it, being that close.
Yeah.
So beyond that, I, like the rest of the council, wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving, my favorite holiday, by the way, where else do you get to gather with family and friends and eat? And no pressure beyond that, just enjoy each other and enjoy the day and the weekend. If I had my way, we'd do it one week, every quarter, all year long. So if you're wondering if they're going to put me on a ballot for, write in for King of America, I'm just telling you right now, I would do that tomorrow. That is all I have this evening. Next up, item number four, department reports. Do we have any department reports?
Mayor?
Oh, did I do that to you?
We forgot.
Oh, well, that's a second mishap today. Mayor Pro Tem Cryer got so excited, I jumped right in line.
And I don't blame you, I'm excited about what you, what happened last week with the veterans parade. I think the posts sixty-three did a great job on trying to put together a parade down Center Street, and providing the car show, and opened up their posts for people to come in there and have a good, see what it looks like, and enjoy the adult beverages and sodas they had there. And the city did a great job here at our Veterans Park, our city hall, they did a fantastic job, the programs were excellent. I think all the messages from Randy Miller, our mayor, spoke very well of our community and our veterans. And I just want the public to know that we love our veterans, and we want to take, we want to recognize them, what they do, and like the mayor said, they're there to give us our freedom, that we can keep it. And like Ronald Reagan said, we're only one generation away from losing our constitution and our freedoms, so we must be vigilant and protect our freedom and support the people. This is a season, like the mayor said, it's Christmas, this is the season that thieves like the most. They'll be out there watching the houses during the daytime, and see what your MO is, what you do, and they'll come in there real quick, in a couple of minutes, they can take all your presents away and do other things. So be vigilant and watch out, especially this time of year, for the next month, as they're going to be there and get their Christmas. But, and not to forget that Christmas is a reason. There's a belief in that, but I'll do that next month and talk about it. But Thanksgiving, our first Thanksgiving was done in sixteen twenty-one by the pilgrims. At that time, they knew they were pilgrims, but they were, they came over here from England to get away from the religious persecution. And they came, the Indians there welcomed them, and they, the person, the chief there spoke English, and they were kind of amazed by it. But they helped out the pilgrims and held them grow their food and stuff, and they had a bountiful harvest, and they celebrated their first Thanksgiving, you know, giving praise to God, and praising the Indians and stuff, and it worked out really good. And this is our reason why, we get together with families, and enjoy our bountiful way, our life that we have, and the food we have, we're not starving, we have plenty of outlets there, and give thanks to God and our family and stuff. And another thing, too, I noticed that we have a great attendance here at city hall. I encourage people to come and to talk, or just come and listen and see us here in action. And we need to know what's on your mind, if you're happy, or you've got issues and stuff, and come and be part of it. I know a lot of you guys watch it on the TV and all that, but it's kind of hard to argue through the TV, or come and say anything. But it's good for us to see our constituents, the people who vote for us, the people that we work for, we work for you guys, and it's good that you guys come and say something that would help guide us in what's the pulse of our community is. And that's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Now then, next up, item number four, department reports. Do we have any department reports this evening? Seeing none? Move on to city manager statements. City Manager Jones?
Thank you, Mayor, no statements.
All right. City Attorney's Statements, Jason?
Thank you, no statement, other than to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving this week.
Same to you and your family as well, sir. Thank you. Future agenda requests this evening, gentlemen?
Not here.
No future agenda requests? All right, it is time for the consent calendar, items eight through ten. All items listed on the consent calendar shall be considered routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the city council requests specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Any item removed from the consent calendar will be considered after the regular business items. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any member of the public would wish to comment on? Seeing none, those items are, item number eight, the minutes of the November seventh, twenty-twenty-three regularly scheduled meeting. Item number nine, the payment of bills, some three hundred thirty thousand dollars worth. Item number ten, monthly report for Kern County Fire Station Number Twenty-One for October of twenty-twenty-three. The recommendation is to receive and file the monthly report for October twenty-twenty-three from Kern County Fire Station Number Twenty-One, and find that the activity is not a project per the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, as set forth in Section fifteen oh six oh C three and Section fifteen three seventy-eight of the SEQA guidelines. Does any member of the council wish to remove any of these items from the consent calendar?
Not here.
All right, seeing none, at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve consent calendar items eight through ten.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Pro Tem Cryer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bryant?
Yes.
Councilmember Waldrop?
Yes.
And Mayor Noor.
Yes, that's approved on four-o vote, with one council member absent. All right, that concludes our open session portion of this evening's meeting. This council will be going into closed session for two items. Item A, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraphs two or three of subdivision D of section five four nine five six point nine D, one potential case. And item B, conference with labor negotiator Craig Jones, city manager, government code section five four nine five seven point six, all units. Thanks again for being a part of this evening's meeting, and for all of us at city council, to all of you out there in TV land, have a very happy Thanksgiving. Good evening.